Planning and zoning and building committee, roll call please.
Alderman Artwood.
Here.
Alderman Curialy.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sosmarski. Alderman Aims.
Here.
Alderman Ardi Woods.
Here.
And Alderman Catalano.
Here. We have a quorum. Next, I need approval of the minutes for September 26, 2024, for the planning and zoning. Any corrections to the minutes? If there are none, all in favor, say motion carries. We're going to move things around. We're going to move up the facade first. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the draft facade improvement grant agreement with the family dentistry at Jazz Building LLC for the renovation of the existing monument sign at 425 East Irving Park Road in the amount not to exceed $2,357.25. That is my motion. And of course, we have a presentation.
We have a very brief presentation. So this is for the property located at 425 East Irving Park Road. It is right on the edge of the boundary with the village of Bensonville. This is a current picture of the sign and the business itself. And that's kind of a close-up of how it looks right now. The owner is proposing to replace the cabinet on top of the sign and also create a new masonry-like base. So it'll be a faux masonry base. And this complies with the requirements for the facade improvement program. And obviously, it'll look different when it's done. There is not going to be an electronic message board component to it. The streetscape committee did review this, and they recommended unanimous approval. And they would be eligible for a grant of up to $2,357.25. They did submit the appropriate quotes and complied with all of the requirements for the program.
Any questions? We have a motion. And a second, roll call please.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Curialy.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Aims.
Yes.
Alderman Ardi Woods.
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next is a contract with Upland Design and Consultant Services to design the community park. Director, we do have a presentation on that one.
I do. Thank you, Chairman. So the last time this item was before you was at a special city council workshop meeting back in September. And at that meeting, the staff presented our methodology to evaluate those seven proposals. And the objective really was to seek out who the planning, zoning, and building committee recommended or felt comfortable with to move forward. The staff had recommended Upland Design and their team, and the streetscape committee had as well. And at the conclusion of the PCB meeting, the council felt comfortable with moving forward with the team of Upland Design. So since that meeting, we did meet with Upland Design team in the beginning of the month, and we reviewed the project deliverables, their proposal, what the city's vision for the park was. We also talked about those innovative ideas that we pulled out of some of the other proposals and asked them to consider those for review in their plans as well. And so in response to that, the team submitted a draft contract and a revised RFP proposal. The highlights of the revisions to the RFP, which were included in a separate section towards the end of the proposal, were that we would have regular ongoing meetings to make sure we were all on target and on track, to have a public open house. That would be held after the three preliminary site designs were created, but before the final draft site plan was created. They would also provide a maintenance plan for the site following construction. And they did agree to include and consider all of the innovative ideas that we provided and include some or all of them in the concept plans that they present to us. They did provide an updated timeline. The only change is that the project will be completed in April of '25 instead of March of '25, which is still six months, because they're going to get started in November rather than October, as we had previously thought. There was an updated professional fee based on the incorporation of all of those items. And of course, all of that, the contract, the proposal, was included in your packet for this evening. And so right now, this was the timeline we had set. Right now, we are at the committee meeting. If the committee recommends approval of the contract this evening, it'll be considered for approval at the November 7 meeting. We would have our kickoff meeting sometime during the week of November 21. And again, the project will be complete in April. So I'm going to stop talking at this point, and I'm going to bring the team up to the podium. They will introduce themselves and provide a little presentation that they have for you. Oop, wrong one. Hold on one second.
Thank you, Stacey. I'm Michelle Kelly and am founding principal of Upland Design. We're really pleased to be here today. And then I'm going to let Maria Blood, also with Upland Design, out of our Plainfield office. I'll be project manager and one of the principals on the project as we continue.
And I'm Ted Haug. I'm one of the founding principals of Legate Architects, and will provide the architectural elements, whatever they might be, under Upland Design. So looking forward to the opportunity.
So I did save both items. Oh, you have a flash drive. It appears as though... And if you can just give me one second, I will open this one, and we'll go from that.
I hope it's not my Christmas pictures. I saved it right from last year. Hopefully, it's actually the presentation for tonight. So Maria and I stopped over at the site, this is loading, beforehand, to give a kind of fresh eyes on it. And we're very excited about creating something amazing there. We also included in our presentation tonight some before photos, so you can see some of our past projects, how they looked beforehand, which is kind of fun to see the magic that happens through the process. So this is our outline. We're going to go kind of quick, because there's a lot of photos. But we did our introductions. We're going to talk about our teams a little. Then we'll talk about your planning process, and of course, questions. But feel free to stop us throughout if you have a question. All right. So you met Maria and I. Upland Design is 26 years old. We've always worked with municipalities. That's from our start. Before I started Upland, I worked for Elmhurst Park District and the city of Evanston as their planner, doing all kinds of municipal work. So we've really focused on creating spaces for communities to go outside and engage with their whole community, as well as recreate and enjoy event spaces. And then I'm going to tell Ted.
Thanks, Michelle. A little bit about Legate Architects. Like you said, I'm Ted Haug. Been with the firm for 40 years. Yes, 40 years. And Lynn Winter is my sidekick. He and I have done most of the work with Upland Design. You know, we've just celebrated our 60th anniversary this year, so we've been around for a while. We've expanded from our one office in Waukegan to four offices in Illinois, three in the Chicagoland area, one in Moline. And we've expanded just this year into Iowa City. And we've had an office in Columbus, Ohio for some time also. Staff of 74. The big thing I want to really mention is, you know, sustainability is really part of our DNA, and it's really important. It kind of ties into the project that you'll be doing. One of the market segments that we do that obviously falls under what you'll be doing is the wellness community market segment. That's a growing market segment for us, and I lead. So like I said, we'll be supporting Upland Design in that effort. In terms of project experience, here are a few projects. A couple of them are ones that we've done with Upland. The Upper Left Hand Corner, just recently completed. Mayfield Heights Community Center outside of Cleveland, Ohio. What you don't see here is a community center, but you know, all kinds of amenities associated with it. Design that we've just completed for the Theosophical Society in Wheaton. It's a master plan for the entire site, integrating nature. Lower Right Hand is one that we just finished, hasn't even been landscaped yet for the Kalina Territories. It's an activity pavilion for musical events and weddings and things like that. And Lower Left Hand Corner is one that we just kind of completed. It's a master plan for a park, for Waukegan Park District, York House Road. They have an existing barn there that we'd renovate for a Questian type of education for the community. And then kind of following the vernacular of the kind of rural barn look is to have pavilions throughout the site for covered areas and picnicking and for activities. Oh, okay. Well, I thought you would. This is another project that just opened this year. Yeah, okay. Rollerco Park. Michelle was kind enough to bring us in to do, like I said, the architectural part of it. And that was an amplifier. They can see in the lower right-hand corner. Huge success. I don't know if you've ever been to Buffalo Grove. They have Buffalo Grove Days. And oh, boy, did they do it right. And that amplifier got a lot of use to it. So you can see one night there. And you know, this is kind of something that they want to continue to use and rent out for activities all through the summer and fall.
Another couple of projects that we've worked on. Garden Park along the Fox River in Geneva. So this was a smaller site, but trying to capture views that are available to us. We always kind of think about that as planners, creating custom elements and arches to kind of frame that form work. You could see different areas of landscaping and pockets for seating and small group activities, but also a place for, you know, respite, individual use along the Fox River, really taking advantage of those views. Another project that we've also worked on, Wolves Crossing. Michelle mentioned earlier, you know, some of the before photos. This is a 33-acre site that was kind of undeveloped in the southwest corner of Naperville, one of the last kind of parcels that was undeveloped for the park district. And you know, you see the lovely before. We went through various community meetings. We had over 2,000 residents respond online, gave us feedback, like at the earliest stages, you know, kind of blank slate, as you saw. We kind of culminated that feedback with staff and the community, online feedback, in-person feedback, and you kind of see the elements that came out of it. You know, pickleball was just the craze or starting of the craze. That was included. Playground splash pad, a restroom bathing facility, places for community to gather. How do you rent the space? How do you program the space? All those conversations were had at the very beginning stages, part of the planning process. And then you could kind of see like the fun elements. So kind of bridging that gap of fun, playful space, but also a space for programming, for nicer, larger events. Here's another one that we worked with, Wheeling Town Center in Wheeling. This was a pub...
Do you do follow-up after you finish a project to see how successful the different elements were?
Yeah. So we talk with staff, and they reach out to us, too. And quite honestly, because we're based out of Plainfield and Naperville being right next door, we go to other communities and work with other communities, and they bring it up.
On any particular scheduled basis, like one year, five year, 10 year?
Yeah. One year is always is a warranty anyway. So we're walking the site with them at one year's to make sure that there's no warranty issues that need to be brought to the contractor's attention. So that happens. But because most of our clients, we kind of stay our clients. So we are talking to them at the next project and the next project, and we're asking, you know, how is that going? What's going on there? And trying to kind of keep up on how they're using it and what's working, and even sometimes when it's not working. Sometimes you thought this particular feature was going to be good for this, and it ends up, well, the public loves it for this. Something completely different in spec. So that's some of the stuff that we really like getting feedback on, is how the public use it. Like for Wolves Crossing, they found it was their most-used park, like as soon as it opened, and then a year later, and then two years later. And that was very exciting to hear and see that, because we tried to develop something that would really engage the community, and it worked.
Alderman Aims, go ahead.
So you mentioned about community feedback, especially with the Naperville. You had a couple thousand people. So Stacey, I think you mentioned in your presentation that after like three plans are put in, then we're going to ask for the community input. So it seems like it should be earlier on, but I don't know the timing. Can you explain that a little bit for the community input from residents?
I will go ahead and just, they can explain the open house portion of it. But we did go through an awful lot of community input with the vision plan. And so there were, you know, hundreds and hundreds of people involved in that plan. And since then, we did go back. We have members of the streetscape committee are our local community, and we went back and touch base with them regarding what things that we'd like to see updated or changed. And it's easier to communicate with the public when you already have some ideas to present to them. So we did take a lot of these innovative ideas from other communities, I mean, other proposals. And so they're going to recommend the best items for the city of Wooddale. And then that way, they can comment on the various different plans and elements.
Okay. So then after, sorry. So then, once something is presented, the community will still have a chance for input and possibly change. I don't know what it'll look like, but I'm just saying, you hate to present something. It's like, well, it's kind of a done deal. You can't really comment on it. But you know, I just want to make sure there's time for community feedback and potentially, you know, a change of something if it's warranted.
Absolutely. And we actually had this same conversation with the design team, because the question is, when should we seek the public input? And rather than seeking it right before the final plan was approved, when really it was a done deal, we're going to gather it at the preliminary stage so that the public comment can be reviewed by the city council and incorporated into the final plan as necessary and needed.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd just like to add, too, that's kind of how we like to work as designers as well. We like bringing multiple concepts to have that conversation. And it might be an A, B, or C. But in the end, really, we know that it's going to be D. It's going to be a combination of all that feedback as we get it.
Okay, thank you.
Another project that we worked on, this was in the city, Village of Wheeling, Wheeling Town Center. This was a partnership between developer, city, and the site was actually adjacent to the metro station, too. So very active space. We were a part of the site planning beyond this, right next to Village Hall. And you can see in the foreground, or in the background there, an apartment building complex. I don't know if I'm seeing a couple people say stuff. So I don't know if you've been here before, but...
I've seen it there.
Yeah. It was a very fun project to work on. Part of that project, we also kind of overlaid different event things that can happen. We actually did a quick study of how many 10x10 tents we could fit within the space for a farmer's market. So kind of thinking of those things during planning is important, to make sure that we have enough open space, but still think about other concerts and stuff. So these were a couple things that in the past, you know, month or two, that they've still kind of engaging the space and holding events. So that's always fun to see.
All right. And a few others. This is Glenbrier Park. And it's the corner of 53 and 56, at the edge of Glen Ellen. And this was a gas station before it became a park. And so this is also a site where we have helped the municipality write grants. We helped them write a grant to buy this land. We helped them to buy land next door and to get multiple grants to develop it. So that this was what we came up with after numerous public meetings to get input on what people really wanted. And then this is kind of an early spring photo of the site. And you can see here, this is one of the shelters that they could use for multiple different kinds of events. So it's an amplifier. So you can see all this nice lawn around the outside. And then the stepped in on the back actually is a fountain, and it works with the land that was already there. But they also can rent it out for maybe a family having their reunion, or there's a fireplace as well. So they do storytime and invite people in for that. And it's really become a wonderful place that people come and take photos for prom, right? They come and actually take photos by the fountain. And it's been really popular. And this is Elmhurst Centennial Park. This was an old church building that the purchaser bought to turn it into both a senior recreation center as well as an outdoor park. And this was the chosen concept. We developed this during COVID, so we stood out on the lawn and put boards up and had the community come. And then everything went online. And that was really nice, because people that didn't want to come out could come and still vote. And we did multiple concepts. This was the final chosen one. And then this is what it looks like. It has some similar features and having a nice shelter, a plaza, a really great playground space. It's a little bit smaller site, but it really has turned into a wonderful place where people come together and enjoy. You can see this, it's a small splash pad. People aren't spending all day there, but it's a great place to come for a couple hours, have lunch under the pavilion, get cool in the summer. And then the seniors are part of that outdoor and indoor space, because there's some fitness equipment, there's some game tables, and they can actually kind of interact with the younger group that comes to the site as well.
Alderman Aims.
Sorry, back on the one. Was that a live roof on top of that pavilion?
Yes, there is. There's a live skin roof there. And surprisingly, it's been pretty low maintenance. You get a little worried. This is probably the third live roof that we've done. And the first one was in Oak Lawn. And we were like, all right, tell us. How is it? How is the maintenance? Are you watering this thing all the time? And it's really worked out well. Everyone who's had one has... It's a cedum mix. It doesn't take a lot of care. So...
Thank you. Yeah, it's interesting.
Alderman Curialy, go ahead.
A question. Are any of these designed to accommodate winter use?
Wolves Crossing actually was designed with a sled hill and a, what do I want to call it, like a wind buffer at the top, which is really pretty punched panels, along with a shaded area, so that people could use that year-round. Ice, which is a wonderful winter use, has been a lot of problematic in our area, because we have so few days that they actually can keep ice. So we're kind of always asking different agencies that we work with, how many days of ice have you gotten this year? Because like, right, this last year, one of our agencies was like nine days. It's a lot of work. So we're careful with ice, unless you want to go with a full, you know, system, much like an indoor ice rink. Otherwise, you're just not getting it. But sled hills, that's good. If you have a bigger space, cross-country skiing. All right. So we just want to go through quickly a little bit of your master planning process. These are the key pieces that we'll be doing to get to a plan for your community. Our first piece, we have a kickoff meeting, and we do site analysis. So we're looking at everything that's underground, that we can know information about soil boring, soil analysis, epigraphy, hydrology, and then, of course, surrounding uses, pedestrian, bicycle access, circulation, and of course, vehicular. And then we move into concept planning. So this, I threw in here, this is the Elmhurst one, where you can see an A and a B. And they're very different designs, but they had a program that was the same for each concept. And that's what we will do with you. We will work with you. You already have some of those pieces written out. It was in your RFP. And so we know what are some of the pieces that you want. We will develop that further with more detail. And then each concept will have those same vision program items, but they'll look different. They'll have different looks to them. And they might be arranged differently. There might be a bigger something and a smaller something. There might be some indoor restrooms in one, and another one there might be indoor restrooms and some other indoor space. So we'll mix it up, so it's interesting. Along with this, we will have some 3D images, so you really can get a feel for the different ideas, whether it's signage. This is a signage we're working on for Roseland on the south side of Chicago. This was some of the early images Ted did for RICO. And then in the upper right hand, you can see a fancy playground, and it almost looks like it's real, but that is a 3D image. So you can kind of get a feel of what that will look like. And we also tried to work with a plan view and 3Ds that come together, that you can really understand how a space gets used. On the lower side here, this is, Catalpa Plaza is in Andersonville. So we're working with the city of Chicago in taking a road and turning it into a public plaza. The community wants to use this for events and festivals and their farmer's market. And so we've had a lot of community meetings to get input and really create something they could both afford and would meet their needs for being a community space. And then the public open house. So we like to do an open house format, where people have the opportunity to talk one-on-one with the designers, as well as have multiple ways to give input. So we will have a written survey, as well as idea input cards. They can write something out. They can draw a picture. They can give us feedback in multiple ways. And then we also use sticky notes, and we usually have a nice open feel. Treats is also a good thing. Makes people feel more welcome. Some water and treats. And with three different options, it's a lot. It's going to be a lot of information. I think people will stay a while, and they'll have a good discussion. And one of the things that we do when we have multiple options is that we give them questions, so they can pick their favorite thing from the different options. And they can pick their favorite option. And that gives us really in-depth information, so that when we come back and say, okay, here's what we've heard, we really have some good data to be able to say, it looks like your community wants this and this. And we're recommending this be your D plan. And then you get to read all of that before we actually draw the D plan, so that you know you've heard and you get to give feedback. And then we have a preliminary and final master plan. The preliminary one, obviously, is for another review, make sure we've got everything right, and a detailed cost estimate, and then a phasing and a grant plan. This is a plan we did for a park in DeKalb. They wanted a six-year phase. But with that, we intertwined the grants, so that we planned ahead of time what elements would go in different grants, so that you have a better chance of success with those grants. So that's it.
Okay, Alderman Messina.
Just a quick comment. Impressed with Glenbrier Park, I think it was, and Centennial are, like you say, adjacent to Busy Streets. And that was kind of my big concern on this site, is could we get somebody that has experience? So kudos. Those two really make me feel much better. Thank you.
Any other questions? If there's no other questions, then I'll make the motion to approve the contract for the service and design for the community park. um, for the, uh, service and design for the community park.
Second.
Roll call?
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods.
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Next is, uh, items to consider at future meetings. Um, Holiday Apartments, PUD, uh, coming up December 12th. And Brand Myer Phase Three, PUD, coming up January 9th. Anything else to, uh, add to future meetings? If there are none, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you.
Uh, called order the meeting of the Public Health, Safety, Judiciary, and Ethics Committee. Uh, minute taker, please note that the same members of the council are present. And, uh, ask for a motion to approve the October 10, 2024 committee minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any comments, questions? A USB stick?
Do they want the USB?
I'm ejecting it first.
Uh, all in favor, approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, first item tonight, liquor license changes. Chief Zito, can you make some comments about what changes are being requested?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, staff is recommending approval of an ordinance, um, to prohibit the sale of alcoholic liquor in violations of the terms of a retail liquor license. It's mostly a code cleanup and just some, uh, legal language that we're adding. Uh, City Attorney Bond can expand on that if needed. Um, and the primary change is the creation of a Class CE Community Event Liquor License, um, that is primarily for taxing bodies and nonprofit use when, uh, businesses want to host those type of events.
Uh, Mayor, please.
So this one's going to be like the T license, $25, is that correct?
Chief?
Yeah, we're asking for council guidance on if you want to set a fee, what that fee is, or if you would like to have no fee at all.
Okay, and one other question. So I saw the time went till 10 o'clock. What if the church or whatever wants till 10:30, 11:00? It says you have to ask the council. And I know how these things work. They come up at the last minute and you don't have a council meeting. Do we need to give you discretion on this or, I mean?
I'll defer to City Attorney Bond. I think the reason for that time is because they're special events. Um, there, it was probably set that way to meet our sound ordinance. Uh, there's an ordinance as far as noise and amplification devices. Um, that is 7:00 PM is the cutoff unless you have a permit, then it goes to 10:00 PM.
Mayor?
So in other words, if they're near a residence, okay, I could see that. Okay.
And if they were at somewhere like the Prairie Fest, uh, location, you know, they would, they could make that request in advance, knowing that they're going to be out there. It's not going to be interfering with any, you know, if it's in a church parking lot that may be near a residential area, that would be a different consideration. So that's the reason for that restriction.
Any other questions? Make a motion.
Well, before, so are we coming up with a number? $25 or 15, is there direction?
Yeah, the chief.
I know he's.
Well, he wants our direction. Uh, and the T license, the temporary licenses are $25. If it's a charity event, but we had one business that did, I think, five or six events. It was for charity, but it was also for, you know, for the business, right? So $25 is not crazy. If it's strictly charity, uh, we've waived those if it's, you know, like a church or something.
So we should make it 25 with the ability to waive it, the same as the other one?
Yeah, I, it's simple discretion.
Is that part of your motion, everyone?
Well, that's, uh, Attorney Bond, do you have some comments?
I was going to suggest you should have a fee. And if you authorize the mayor in his capacity as a local liquor commissioner to waive that using his discretion on the, the example he provided would make sense. Then your, the money's going more into the charities pocket. But if it's not, uh, then you still have a fee. But you should have, there should be a value to that license to have him go through it, so.
I would say make it the same as the T license, the 25.
Okay.
Unless somebody's got a, wants to make it more.
Chief? We need a motion.
Yeah, just to clarify, uh, the other issue is do you want to set a number of licenses? Um, the T, there is no number, it's unlimited. Um, the O is 10. Um, my recommendation is you make this unlimited as well unless you think you need to set a number of licenses per calendar year.
Mayor?
We've only had one business that's, and they came in with five. I think it was five, correct, or was it six? I mean, I, I don't see every, somebody coming up, they already have a liquor license. Why would they come in to do for 10 weeks in a row? I, I don't see a problem.
Anything else? Anyone want to make a motion? I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the recommended liquor license changes with the addition of the CE, uh, license at a cost of $25 per day.
Right.
For a second?
I'll second.
Does that include an unlimited number of licenses?
Unlimited number, yes. Do we need a roll call or?
Yeah.
Roll call, please?
Well. Do a roll call.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods.
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Uh, second item of business, a change order to increase the contingency funds for the Police Department Rehab Project, an amount of $75,000. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yep.
I just want to know if you also, uh, we had the other amendment, which was the definition of alcoholic liquor. Did you want to address that?
Was debate.
So you're, those were acceptable as well?
Yes, yes.
That's why the other one was only beer.
Was there a second to the motion?
Oh, I second. Yeah.
Second. Any questions? Alderman Arti Woods?
Uh, the 65,000 or 63,000 for the bathroom remodels, was, was that not in the original plan? These are changes or what is that?
Yeah, so in the original scope of the project, uh, there, there, whether they were, it was an oversight or they chose not to, um, there's two interior bathrooms inside the police department that were not being touched at all. Um, so we're looking to update those, um, as part of this project.
Follow up?
So would we need the contingency to be more then, since we're planning on spending the 63 out of the 75? Or how does that work?
No, so we're expecting, um, as part of those bathrooms, and the 63 was not just bathrooms, but also updated lighting to the exterior PD entrances, um, cleaning up the exterior fascia, um, on the entrances and exits, and additional wireless access points and interior door replacement. Um, with the contingency we have left, um, we're requesting 75. We believe that would cover everything we need.
Okay, so that should be good, awesome, thank you.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods.
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
That passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, none, unless someone wants to add something? No? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn. Thank you.
Like to call the order the Public Works Committee meeting. Please let the note taker note that the same elected officials are present. Someone like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 10th?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, uh, first off, I'll make the motion to approve installation and maintenance of city branded decorative signage in the Dominion Drive subdivision.
Second.
I'm sure there's some discussion on this, Director Lang?
Sure, thank you Chairman. Uh, this got brought up as a future item at a previous committee meeting, uh, to install our city branded signage and decorative posts within the Dominion Drive subdivision. Uh, the cost of the signs is minimal, but those streets are private streets. Uh, we verified with legal that although they are private property, uh, given that there is a larger public use, it would be a permissible use of public funds.
Questions on this one? Mayor?
Yeah. Personally, I think this should have been done before, but I don't know, I remember some discussions. The homeowners didn't want to main, did, are we going to maintain them now? Because I think that was part of the problem when we didn't do them, they were saying, no, no, we're not going to do anything or whatever. I, I forget now, it's quite a few years ago. But I wanted them done back then. So we clear on that stuff? If sign falls down, we're going to fix it, right? We're not.
Director?
Yeah, the, uh, the necessary agreement would be, uh, the right of entry to install and then, uh, future easement to maintain the, the signage going forward. So the expectation is that the city would maintain them.
Alderwoman Ames?
Um, so I, I guess I just want to make sure, so if we're spending public money to do private work, do the people who live there have to agree to this? And then does this open up other homeowners associations to say, well, then you should do this work in our area? I just kind of looking to see how that would work.
Director Lang?
I would have to defer to legal on this one.
Attorney Bond?
Yeah, so just a, the predicate is that public funds are to be used for a public purpose. And if it was a purely private purpose where you're going into, somebody's got flooding on their yard because their sprinkler broke, that would not be a proper use of public funds because it doesn't benefit anybody but that property owner.
Right.
Uh, with the street light, you know, these are private streets, but they're still used by fire, police, you know, visitors go through there. It's not, you're not precluded. If it was a truly private road where you could not access it as a member of the public, that would be a different discussion. But if there's a public benefit, even though there's an incidental private benefit, you can use those public funds. It would require us to get access. And my, my recommendation would be if they're not providing this access to do the installation and to do the maintenance on it, then that, they have to get that together on their own. We're not going to go, uh, each individual and try and get that, that authorization, especially if there's going to be a maintenance moving forward. So yeah, you would need to have the, uh, that, but the, these are all in, uh, public right of way in, uh, in, uh, at least where you're going to locate the signage is in the, not.
Yeah, they would be on, um, property owned by the, uh, the homeowners association.
So the, the association would be the ones that would have to give us the authorization because they have, they, and when, not public, I meant for the, the association. They have the, uh, they maintain the common area. They maintain all of that, uh, that property. So they would be the ones that would provide it. And that's a, there's a restriction in each of the deeds of those. I'm assuming it's like every other one where that allows the homeowners association to, to have that authorization.
Follow up?
So that, um, moving forward then, in order for this to happen, each of the homeowners association would have to sign or agree to this for access?
No, just the association itself on behalf of all of those.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods?
So would we actually have to get a legal maintenance easement?
Attorney Bond?
No, we would simply do, and we've done this before, where we get an access, uh, agreement that allows us to access it for the limited purpose. That because of easement, then we have to go through others and there's, then you are spending public money to, if you're going to acquire that easement. Uh, in exchange for the city, in, in erecting these, uh, these decorative signs and maintaining them, they would then, at no cost to the city, provide us that access. We wouldn't actually own the property. We'd simply have the right to go in there to do the installation and repairs. So it would be by way of an access agreement.
And so secondly, would it, would it make more sense? I'm not arguing either way, just thinking out loud over here that we installed them and they took care of them? Or are they saying they don't want to take care of them? Anyway, I mean, they have to take care of their own street signs, so. But it, would it be a cleaner thing that we make it a donation or a thing to keep them and that they take care of them?
Director Lang?
I haven't had any direct conversation with them regarding, uh, future maintenance of the signage. I just assume that, uh, you know, these are slightly more expensive signs than just your typical U-channel post. Uh, you know, we have our vendors that we work with, we keep these in stock. It would just be easier for us to maintain them going forward if they were struck by a vehicle or whatnot.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, so again, I vaguely remember this. No, no, we don't want to maintain them, blah, 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 this and that, and then we moved on. When, you know, we should have just put them in, what's the big deal? How many times have those poles been redone? Probably never unless some, somebody knocks it over, some plow, right? So we got this access way or something. Well, we don't even plow that street. It's not ours.
I took exception to the plow being the one to knock it over and not, uh.
I apologize. I apologize. But, you know, we can go in, we have access to go fix it, whatever. Honestly, we should have the signs everywhere, but that's why I think it got a little ridiculous and we just kind of moved on. I, I remember.
I think there were other issues that we were discussing and didn't want to muddy the waters and just move forward.
Right.
Major project. But again, going back to them taking care of it, I think it's worth the conversation. I don't see what the difference would be. We could always supply them if they needed the sign. If somebody knocked over the pole, they can call us, we can get them a pole.
Right.
I'm just looking at, since we don't plow the road, we don't do anything else there. If other people are knocking over or not taking care of them, then that burdens us with that maintenance. I have no problem giving them the signs. I think they should have been, I agree, it should have been done at one time to unify the city, so.
Alderman Catalano?
But the, the city does go in to maintain the water and sanitary and the sewers, right?
Correct, there's a, an existing easement specifically for, uh, water sewer and sanitary and storm sewer.
So we still go in there, yeah.
Correct.
Alderwoman Ames?
So from what Alderman Artwood says, so if we give them the signage and then if there's a maintenance issue, some plow or whoever, they have plowing, knocks it over or some car hits it or something, then would we provide replacement parts at no charge to them? Or they would have to pay for them?
Director Lang?
I would imagine we treat it, uh, just as any other public sign, that if it were knocked down, then we would repair and replace it.
Mayor, please.
Right, then if their, their plow company or somebody hits it, they're going to end up paying for it anyways. It's, we're going to charge them, even though we're going to do the work, we're going to bill them back if their plow driver decides to, but let's face it, those signs have been there. I haven't seen those signs get knocked down yet, but there's always a first time.
Director Lang?
Typically, those are covered by the driver's insurance claims we make.
And it's the two street signs, the three stop signs, is there already the newer sign on Irving and Dominion? I'm assuming since it's on Irving Park. Or, I'm sorry, Addison, yeah, okay. Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods.
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
And that passes. Next is approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Complete Cleaning Company for citywide janitorial services. That is my motion.
Second.
Director Lang, any comments on this one?
Sure, just, uh, in an effort to get some competitive pricing and refresh our scope of services, the city issued a request for proposals for janitorial services. We received eight proposals back. Uh, they were discussed at the RFP Steering Committee a couple of weeks ago, and a recommendation was made to go with, uh, Complete Cleaning Company. Um, we felt that not only they're a local business, uh, their emphasis on quality assurance and control uh, put them above the other lower proposals.
I have one question on this one, the, the vehicle maintenance portion, the 585 a month? What is the vehicle, they're cleaning out cars? Is that what that is?
No, they have the vehicle maintenance offices, which is in the 720 or Central Building.
Okay, that's just the specific office, okay, perfect. Any questions? Uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods.
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
And that passes. And finally, approval of special event equipment and material purchases. I'll save a motion to see what we're going to go through here.
At the, uh, the special meeting we had back in September regarding purchasing or renting, uh, special event equipment, uh, there was a recommendation made that staff go out and get some pricing for some of the items that we would use, uh, more regularly for some of our other special events. that we would use more regularly for some of our other special events. Specifically named, I believe, we're a light tower for like summer concerts and such. When people are leaving, it gets a little bit dark. We have an existing light tower, but it, it doesn't cover much ground, so, uh, a recommendation was made to get pricing for that as well as a generator which could be used for the summer events. We currently are renting generators for each event at $1,000 each use. Uh, they could also be used for Memorial Day Parade, Drunk or Treats, and the tree lighting event. Uh, we also got pricing for some black cattle fencing, which was recommended as an alternative to using snow fence and barricades and caution tape as partitions for some of our special events. And then lastly, uh, we got pricing for an ice chest, uh, which would replace the rentals that we use for Prairie Fest and would be used all year round for other special events.
How many times a year are we renting the generator? I know you said for every event, approximately?
So seven summer concerts and then we rent one or two for the, uh, the tree lighting event.
Okay, so we recoup the cost on that in two and a half years, basically?
Pretty much, yeah.
Cool. I'll make a motion to approve all four.
I'll second.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Currielli?
I just had a question about the ice chest. Do we use the other that, would we use the other than Prairie Fest?
So we don't rent ice chests any other time of the year, um, but we do use ice at our other special events, causing us to, you know, have to run out each time and buy ice. Uh, we also wind up with a lot of extra bags of ice after Prairie Fest, which we have to store. So the last few years, we've been using the school district's freezer to store them and they wind up probably not getting used or getting used elsewhere. Uh, so this allows us to take those extra bags that we get from Prairie Fest, store them in the ice chest and use those at other special events instead of having to run out and purchase ice. And it also allows us not to have to rent the, the ice chest for Prairie Fest, obviously. And there's been issues in the past where the deliveries for Prairie Fest just haven't showed up, leaving us to scramble and go have to purchase as much ice as we could day of.
It, it, it's just a box. It's not, not electric. Does it have a cooling system in it?
It does have a cooling system.
It does have a cooling system. So then the, when it's not in use, it has to be dried out in the inside, so it doesn't get all rusty?
Well, we would keep it plugged in year-round and, uh, either at the police station or the Public Works Building.
Mayor, please?
Yeah, the light tower, so I know we're making a motion for all four, but in the light towers, you're talking about one, two, because I know we only have one right now, right?
Correct.
How long, how long have we had it?
Uh, it had the turkey age on it.
It's 2016, I think it said in there.
Okay, so how many are we looking to use or to get on the light towers? Just one more?
One additional one.
And that'll cover like, I mean, we have the concerts, the last few concerts, two or three concerts are a little darker. I'm just, that's enough? You feel that's enough? Because I know for the fest, we'll use them four nights.
Bumped up the concerts this year. Remember, they're going to be six weeks in a row. So it should, without rain dates, it shouldn't go as late.
Right, and I know we use, how many we use when we have the tree lighting? Three, four?
We use one currently because that's all we have.
Oh, okay.
We don't rent any for anything other than Prairie Fest.
So we only had one, okay.
Correct.
I just, and, uh...
The fencing.
I don't know, I called Janelle, I thought she was going to be here, but I asked her, I go, "So how much did it cost us to rent 170 feet of fencing?" Just out of curiosity, I like to see, I always like to know how fast we get our money back. Did, did she tell you that?
Yes, and I did get that number. I have to look it up, though. We rent 700, 700 feet, I believe, uh, for Prairie Fest.
Yeah, but this is 170 feet for the 2,200.
So the cost for cattle fencing for Prairie Fest, 700 feet for $1,575.
Get our money back real quick?
Yeah. And this is enough to take care of the concerts and, and what, I know it's not going to handle the entire fest, but...
Right, yeah. For the concerts, yeah, we feel like that fits our needs.
Okay.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Ames?
Um, yeah, at the very last part of this, it said, um, of course, these items are unbudgeted. And then additionally, staff budgeted $20,000 for FY 2025 for a second electronic message board to replace. So is that part of this also or that's just information?
That's just information.
Oh, okay. So we're not voting on a message board. It's just these other items?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so the motion is to approve all four, meaning the light tower, the generator, the cattle fencing and the ice chest. We had a second.
Who made the motion?
I did.
You, okay, touch.
Antonio, have a second. Uh, roll call, please?
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Uh, items to be considered at future meetings, Amendment to H.R. Green Agreement, water tower is November 14th. Anyone have anything else to add? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.